Just stands, one nation under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to lead us tonight, so that we can hear it, please.
Sure. Dear Lord, look over the city and all its, all of our citizens, look over City Council, keeping level heads, making good decisions for the city and all those that live here, work here, play here, in your name I pray.
Amen. Call the roll man.
Mr. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Childs? Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Sherman?
Yeah.
Mr. Booth?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Motion to excuse Mr. Childs and Mr. Smith tonight's meeting. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yeah.
All right, has anyone had, had a chance to review, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any council discussion on segments? Motion to approve, motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Stan was here.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right, any citizens' comments tonight?
Just, just one, do you mind if I sit rather than both there?
That's fine.
I just have a question, if I could find out from someone what your regulations are regarding Airbnb's. I know one block in town, there's about five of them, and it was at one time just a residential area. And so that block has lost a little bit of its neighborliness. It's, it was a neighborhood and now, as a matter of fact, what are their B and Bs? The people that used to live there before they sold always kept our key so that if we're gone and something happens, they can, could, could go in and find out what the problem was. But now we don't have that neighborliness that we used to have. And so I'd just like to know if you have any regulations as far as, can anybody have an Airbnb in your place? Or do you try to zone it in certain areas or what your regulations might be?
Sure. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there's any regulations as far as where it can be. And the most regulation is ensuring that it's taxed properly and they register with the auditor's office.
They pay the, they pay the tax.
As a tax, yes.
And, and sir, real quick, I'm sorry, sir, for the public record, can you state your name?
Oh, sure, my name is David Palmetiere, and address is fifty West Franklin Street, which is right behind the old booth, which was right behind the old Kroger's, which is where the elementary school that my wife attended.
She's appreciating that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And she's probably shaking her head, why did you say that? But in that same block, I think there's maybe four, at least maybe five Airbnb's. And it used to be just all residential. No. And I, I know a couple other communities that where they've kind of regulated them into certain zones, and they've kept certain regi- residential areas where they will not allow Airbnb. And I was wondering if you might consider that or eliminating them, you know, to only so many in a particular block so that we don't have all of our neighbors gone, we just have Airbnb. It's not that I'm against them particularly, except that, again, there's a lot of transancy and there's no neighborliness that there used to be. And though I, I'll look out after your house, you'll look out after mine, and that has disappeared.
Okay, I think that would be good, a committee that would start, who is planning and development?
Yeah, no, you could have the planning commission work on it.
Have the planning commission do it.
Yeah.
Refer that to the planning commission and let them work on that, and then it goes to the zone.
Well, we, we talked at, I don't know if it was last regular meeting or one of our committee meetings about having a planning commission work, look at more campground regulations as well. So that would give them some more work.
Yeah, we've got some stuff coming up, we've, we've been discussing it. Because right now, we currently don't have anything about campground regulation or anything like that. We're gonna try and do that all at once, one thing, with campground bed and breakfasts and everything.
Well, you would think bed and breakfasts in a residential area would be strictly on zoning.
That would be.
Alone. Because now you're turning a neighborhood into a commercial business.
Well, I mean, it's no different than rental property.
True, it's a little different.
It's just a short-term rental is all it is.
Yeah, one-night rental or a weekend rental.
Your Airbnb, it's a lot of places, I think, said, you know, three-day.
There definitely needs to be addressed, we'll look into that.
I think.
That will go, we'll figure out which committee that needs to get to. Thank you, appreciate your input, thank you, Rick. Anyone else? Okay. All right, business and organizational comments. Anything? Okay. Do we have any committee discussions? Okay, department updates, who we have, do we have? Go ahead, Harry. Mr. Barber, Chief Barber, the floor is yours.
All right, since the last council update, our every day's call are still consistent. Basically a consistent uptick in the past few months. Since the last council board mini-trainings were conducted beyond the daily shift training that was allowed. We've conducted may train with surrounding departments. Surrounding departments are also invited to all the trains that we host. Our members along with the Athens, firefighters conducted various trainings and evolutions in the old West Elementary School building, that building will be torn down, so we've been using that for trainings. Since the last update, we had our last training in the land bank thing structures that were on High Street. Those, we were using those two structures for training purposes before the land bank had this getting to be tore down. The last training was search and rescue training with Athens Fire Department. On the twenty-seventh, I was invited to attend, authority of jurisdiction, five-hour course, a course in university for fire suppression and alarm systems, it's a continuing education course. They offered it for free, so that was an all-day course that was nice. The day after, which was on the twenty-eighth, I attended an all-day training conducted by the Fifty-second Civil Support Team. This team is poised to assist with chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and high-yield explosives or natural disaster incidents, and help advise, you know, incident commanders and personnel on specific response measures, so that was a good all-day class as well. That was actually offered to the county, and I think there was also, it was also offered to law enforcement as well. Many of our members now make up the Athens County Dive Team, our department is starting to house more dive equipment here. It will likely in the future control diving response out of our fire department. Crew members will be assisting Wayne National Forest firefighters with annual pack testing. As we, we have one event tomorrow. Annually, annually, we provide required standby EMS support during the three-mile firefighter pack test that they perform. The Tri-County Fire EMS program successfully passed our audit and received a three-year charter renewed through the High Division EMS. Nelsonville Fires Remote Training Site for the Tri-County Fire EMS Program, some fire department members also have instructors. Additionally, many of us have joined or is in the process of joining the Region Seven Swiftwater Rescue and Dive Team as well as the Region Seven Hazmat Response Team. This past weekend was a National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. I was honored to be asked to escort the family of fallen brother, Senior Firefighter Jeff Arms, and to help honor him in front of our nation. This was a huge event, very moving. For those that weren't aware, I made, there's posts on our webpage, or I'm sorry, our Facebook page, as well as videos. This year, they recognized one hundred and forty-eight firefighters that died in the line of duty during the 2021 year. Funds for the FEMA grant award should be requested this week. I'll put that request in, so this needs to be on Taylor's, we are that, if you'll see that money hit the account for the city. Once that money hits the account, we can do the five percent matching that we talked about, and then get the payment out, that way it doesn't set the account for longer than thirty days. They don't like that because of the crew interest. Fire Prevention Week started yesterday and runs through the fifteenth, and we are crew visit all Nelsonville students through fifth grade, teaching fire prevention. Today, we visited all the students through first grade. And I had an appointment recommendation letter for a firefighter that Scott will read during his report. And we will need at some point civil service to get some names together so we can do a civil service test. We're opening, we have some openings on our part-time roster right now. And the last thing I have is trick-or-treat, fire department will be out again, giving candy out throughout town like we do every year. So I've got.
Counsel doesn't mind, or no questions for the chief, I'd like to hijack and get Mr. Dunn in there because I'd like to talk about him. Chief doesn't like his name. Mr. Hayden Dunn, he is a very young firefighter in age, but I didn't, I guess I asked you, but I didn't really give you the option to answer. Hayden has been with the department, well, he's been here longer than I have, but he's been, he's been in the, he's been in the calls, it's been tough for the city, he hasn't missed any of the, he hasn't missed any of the hard ones. He always seems to be there when, when the stuff happens. So I think having him on the team is, is good. I will publicly say Hayden, that I love having you young, but I think that you should be training and looking toward the future as well. I mean, love to have you now, but you know, definitely toward the future, you know, I got to talk to your dad about that the other day as well. So I would like to recommend Mr. Dunn, Nelsonville, I'll be having for a little while. You know, get utilizing a little bit more and, you know, grow some more. And I would like to recommend the council to hire him full-time.
Okay, motion to hire firefighter Dunn on a full-time status per the recommendation of Mr. Scott Frank and Mr. Chief, or Chief Harry Barber. Second.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, in here. Okay, thank you, sir. I was doing some research on that. The House, Ohio House Committee passed legislation, it's called a bill, House Bill five sixty-three, preventing cities from regulating Airbnb's. So we'll have to look into that a little bit more, but there is some, there has been some talk in the House about that, the Ohio House.
And that's Airbnb.
Airbnb's, House Committee passes bill to block cities from regulating Airbnb's and other short-term rentals.
And what bill was that again?
Five sixty-three.
I'd seen that too, basically it says, short-term, long-term rentals can't be treated differently.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got a question for Chief Barber. This is Fire Prevention Week you mentioned, so you're spending some time in the, the school this week. What kind of stuff are you going over with the kids?
So every year, they have a different motto, what they're trying to teach. This year's, fire won't wait, plan your escape. So we do stock drop and roll, we do fire escapes, safe places, well, stock drop, cover roll, we change things up now. We plug our smoke detectors, we send them to gear that you wear, talk about how, you know, the skate plan with the adult at the home, whether it be grandma, grandpa, brother, sister, uncle, mom, or dad. Pretty much all the things that we could talk to the kids at those specific age levels. If you're pre, you're pre-kindergarten, then your smaller, your younger kids are gonna get, or the plan your escape, explain what smoke detectors are, what they sound like, what they're there for.
And so you have, so you're not just adding elementary, then you're like through the middle school?
We go through the fifth grade, so we plan it to go through the fifth grade and we plan it to reach every student. So we spend time in each classroom, usually about fifteen minutes per classroom, possibly to the children, explaining things to them, giving them handouts. People in town might see like the National Fire Safety Council, letters that go out once a year through those donations. All the supplies for Fire Prevention Week are purchased. So all that goes straight back into the children and the community for fire prevention. Without that, it would be impossible to do those things.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else for Chief Barber? Okay. Yes, Sam?
I've heard of forever chemicals, PFAS, and they're used in firefighter foam. Do you have any plans or possibilities of using something that will not persist forever in the environment?
Right now, there is no replacement for certain classes of firefighting foam. We're actually doing studies right now as well, to, to be able to treat our gear that we wear to protect us and fires, the treatment process also causes cancer. So they're working on solutions right now, but I think it's gonna be a long time from now.
I have a quick question for you, it seems I brought some foam. Have you gotten any more studies or information on these lithium car batteries?
So we're, there's constant studies coming out as far as what caused this fire, what caused that fire, whether it be corrosion on terminals, lithium burns very vigorously when it, when it's ignited. Even small lithium batteries, if there's a bunch of them in a box, they're actually hard, hard to extinguish. The problem is, the lithium battery, the innovations with batteries have surpassed the nation's firefighting capabilities as far as that goes. We're trying to play catch-up right now. So right now, it's vigorous amounts, or hazardous amounts of water. And that's really about the only way we can treat lithium fires.
Because the charging stations in town, and we get more and more visitors.
The goal, yes, the goal.
It's gonna be a reality sooner than later.
The goal with electric vehicle, EV vehicle fires right now is keeping batteries in some from being directly involved in the fire.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, chief. Mr. Cullen?
Well, I called Friday about the street sweeper, they just started tearing into it. They have to pull everything off and pull them later out of it. So just to give everybody an update on that. Walnut Street's gonna be repaved on the twenty-seventh, section down on the east end. It's redone, so that'll be closed for the day.
Bear, that's from, or, sorry, bear, I said, bear, that's from Borough Boulevard to the end down to Poplar. Yes, and even I forgot to get back to him.
The river bores under the river, it's been put in, it's been on tests. They were here today, bleeding everything off. When they dug the line up in the field, we noticed the pipe was bad in the field. We had to dig the field across the rest of the way, put new pipe in. We're moving a valve out of the driveway, the water plant, moving it down in the grass. We had to get shoring, so we've got new, a new shoring system called Build-A-Box. It's the, the high-tech stuff now, it's what all companies are going with, Columbus City, Columbus goes with it. And you can build it to any size you need, instead of the speed shoring comparable in price, but it can be built to any size that you need in the tunnel.
Sir, would you please put the front feet down, I don't think those chairs are load-rated for that kind of stress. I was just worried they're gonna collapse. I mean, it's a lot. Just looking out for you.
Since the last meeting, we've done nine ton of asphalt. The meters are still an ongoing project, they're slowly getting them done, but they are getting done. Company in town now.
Is it the same company or a different company?
It's a different company, but it's the same, the same prime contractor is a different subcontractor, and they're actually getting things done, just not sweetie, because the way things were skipped, they're skipping around. We've had nine weeks since last meeting, most of it is, we heard about it on last night, it was a pretty good one. Actually, there's a piece of pipe from Scott brought in from Sherman Town, because I know he's gonna touch on it also. Guys got called out at three-thirty this morning, so I want to give a thanks to them for coming in, nobody complaining, they got done what we needed done.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Cullen? How was that fight?
Couldn't tell you. I didn't know, I didn't know when it was installed.
That's probably fifty, sixties.
Yeah, I mean, the most we got, what we can find on our GIS, and I had nothing. We actually fixed it, was it last year? Because that's when Dan was up there, and the clamp, the repair, from then, was right at where it's cut. They just took the clamp, draw it out once, it's just a, you cut the underside.
Is that galvanized?
No.
Cast. Cast. Is that some of the pipe that's scheduled to be replaced going forward?
No, so that's what I wanted to bring it in for, so this is one of the lines that's not on the list to be done, and this is what we're starting to chase now. So now that we're getting more and more lines replaced, these ones are popping up. And one of the things Jason and I talked about today is that when we get a line by our third patch, I mean, if we're doing a, so this is the third time we patched this in about six weeks.
We're just in a small area.
A short area. We're gonna start, by the third patch, we're just gonna start replacing stick at a time. So that's what we did this morning, the guys threw a valve on there and just threw a whole stick of pipe in there, and we're just gonna start doing that, and little by little, eventually you'll either get a good line or we'll have, change a whole line, you know, through time, instead of just doing patch by patch. So what was that stick, thirty-foot, twenty-foot that they put in there? So they threw a valve and a twenty-foot stick in there, got rid of a few other patches, and you know, over time, that should reduce the amount, should buy them more time in between repairs, you know, and since they're in there. So unfortunate for the residents, they had a little bit more downtime today, but in the long run, it'll be less downtime.
And, and the reason the valves were broken was, the way it is right now, we have, we have a lot of streets. They're bad, we had a lot of streets shut down, a lot of streets that weren't even close to this.
That's true.
I mean, I seen you up by there this morning when I pulled back in again, and we just had a lot of clear up in the middle street, it was all shut down, that was the only way to shut that down, I thought it would be able to do it.
Mr. Cullen, could you pick that up for the camera and show that on camera so that everybody can see it?
I ain't got it, I'm crippled, so thanks, Tony.
So they can see the holes?
Yeah.
That's where it is.
That's what a piece of pipe goes there in the morning, you talked about last year. Yeah, the one last year had about a softball fight.
That's our water lines, ladies and gentlemen. That is basically from lack of maintenance or any future planning for years out of the old utility committee, which happened to be headed by.
So the crew got it changed out.
Yes, the crew got it fixed. Twenty-foot section. Thank you, Jason, and thanks to the guys for bringing on that, appreciate that, I, that's fixing things right. You know, that, I was complaining that you couldn't shower this morning.
And there was a lot of people there. The problem with it is, is what time is twelve o'clock? About two-thirty? Yeah, they got a hold me.
I think he got a hold me about two-thirty, so yeah.
Yeah, two-thirty-five maybe, and I came down here, and I had to get a hold guys, get them called in. I mean, it's, it's over there, we don't want to take a chance, it was flowing very, very good, and if the valve's not working, I wouldn't want to take a chance, so I had to get guys in here because the water tower's right there.
Did we have the, did we get the second line tied in for, that came across the river, I know they got the boring done, I saw that.
It's not tied in yet because we gotta finish on the other end. That was actually, I, I planned on starting to dig that this morning, I mean.
Forty feet right at the plant, is that about right? Forty feet in the valve we got left?
About eighty feet, eighty feet, in the valve.
Okay.
But I mean, we gotta get in and get the old valve out.
For those of you who haven't been paying attention or don't know, this is a line that has been broken for about four or five years.
Twenty nineteen?
Twenty nineteen, so it'd be three years. It is the, the second water line that beats the entire city and both of, right now, for years, we have only been sufficing with one. So this is the second, that has a leak, that has a leak, so this is the second line, and we'll be back up to full capacity. Fix that leak, and fix the other leak, or this right there, this right there. All right. Any questions? Thanks, Jason, thanks to the guys.
Thank you, buddy.
I have a question.
Go ahead, just.
I seen you mowed Mason City Hill. Yeah, thank you, looks much better, but it did expose a awful lot of trash. Is there some way that I can get cleaned up?
So our folks, we have three folks right now, as you can see, that are tearing apart stuff in here, so we can run them up there in between our star folks, we can run them up there if they have a problem. So I didn't notice it myself, but I'm usually pretty terrified with my teen driver going up the hill in the morning. I mean, she does great, I'm just tired, that's all.
Anyone else for Mr. Cullen? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right.
Uh, Mr. President, we need to amend the agenda to add sixty-nine twenty-two for first reading.
Motion to amend the agenda to add sixty-nine twenty-two, ordinance sixty-nine twenty-two, one emergency. Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Also, I have a motion to table ordinance sixty-four dash twenty-two until the next meeting. I think that if we're talking about a raise for somebody, I want all of the council members here to be able to vote on it and have their input into it, I think that's a little fair, I'll say that.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
All right. I want to ordinance on second reading, sixty-six dash twenty-two.
An ordinance adding to the city code authorized camp ground to be run off a single water meter.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter? Motion to, motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, first reading.
Yeah, sixty-nine twenty-two, it will be, I think someone introduced it, please?
I'll introduce it, thank you.
And one that's mandating two thousand twenty-two appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following, the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance to line item seven five zero dash seven six zero dash two one one zero zero Contract Services Sludge Fund and declaring an emergency. Whereas the appropriations need to be amended to appropriate money from the unappropriate aid and balance to line item seven five zero seven six zero three three zero two zero Contract Services Sludge. Now therefore, leader name by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio follows. The two thousand twenty-two appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Thirty-five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance to line item seven five zero dash seven six zero dash two one one zero zero Contract Services Sludge Fund. The total appropriation, our balance is decreased by said amount. Total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. This ordinance is being cast as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force effective upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules, which they have October two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on said matter? Everyone know what this is for?
This is to press this sludge coming out of the sewer plant.
Pretty exciting, this, and possibly one more and that'll be it.
That'll be it forever.
The new. Well, then we pay somebody else to do it.
Right, exactly.
And then we'll be doing our own, pop that dry stuff in dumpster and call it to dump ourselves.
Great.
So I'm going to suspend, I'll second that motion.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Pummett?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes. Motion to adopt.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Pummett?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes. Okay, um, that is all the legislation for tonight. Okay, city managers report.
So we're still pushing forward with all the, uh, grants and projects going on in town, as Jason mentioned. There's a lot of projects and they are all moving and we have a lot of upcoming. We're still on tap to start the sewer at the end of this month, still planning on starting over on the, the other side off of uh. Trench power road. Murray, yeah, Murray, unofficial road, Murray Lane. And uh, that will be dug up first, it's gonna be about fifteen feet deep, so um, that's where that will start. And from there, um, that'll wrap around that whole area and then rubber treats the next slot, so I'm gonna get sewer. And uh, that'll, and from there, it depends on if the equipment comes in for the lift stations. Or if they're gonna start them, excuse me, start them in a road street, so I'm not sure where it is, and all the equipment at that point.
They were hoping to send one on the street.
The water wells are still, um, the, we're still waiting on the pump to come in for well. Golly, I forget whatever it is now, um, the one that we've been waiting on the well, or the pump to come in on, it's still not arrived. But it's all painted, ready to go, as soon as the pump comes in, it'll be back up and running. The well that had the busted platform, um, that will get rebuilt next summer, it has been repaired. To meet the, uh, notice of violation that D P A had against it, so we'll be able to close that out, it's also gonna get painted this year. So all three wells will be painted this year and all but the one will have, uh, will be completely rebuilt and running. So I'll be happy to report that on our end of your slide and the water plant after next year and that last pump's up and running. And with that grant, that five point two grant that we're getting ready to do and the mechanics that they're gonna put in the clear wells down there to eliminate the P T H M's. Water plant's gonna be in really, really good shape, uh, I'm pretty excited for where that thing's headed. And um, also, um, we've had a, so we've had a water, we've had a flushing program in the books for years. And we just haven't done it, so, um, done it regularly, I should say. So you will see the guys out there, they're gonna start flushing, they'll be flushing the second week, between the second and third week of the month. Um, in different areas, they're gonna play with it as far as what, uh, what hydrants are gonna use. And the, what they're trying to do is make sure that they have, um, equal amounts of chlorine. At all parts in the water system, so what they're trying to do is pull the chlorine through the system to make sure all of our customers have. Um, the same level or the same quality of drinking level at all parts of the system, so that's what they're trying to do, is pull the chlorine through the system. So there's no, uh, stagnant, some are at work, but, um, parts of the system where, further parts away where it doesn't get used as much. Uh, the chlorine content is lower and the idea by doing that flushing is to pull the fresher water out to that part. And get fresher water to our customers, so you will see the guys out there actively doing it, it's gonna be an experiment at first. They're going to pinpoint certain areas, they're gonna be out there measuring and, uh, doing different experiment or testing as far as, uh, you know, stopwatch. They have a whole plan or they're working on their plan, I should say, they don't have a plan yet, but they're identifying right now which hydrants they're gonna use. And then they'll be out there timing it and then checking the chlorine and then they'll be adjusting, um, to get it right. They're gonna start Nelsonville first to get that, uh, figured out and then they're gonna jump over to Buc- and then, uh, before you know it, have it up and running. Uh, and it'll be every, uh, middle of the month, because it has to be opposite of our testing with though. So two weeks opposite of our testing, no, and that will become a monthly thing that we do, so. Uh, again, it's been on books, we just haven't been doing it, so we're gonna start doing it.
So the, so every month, we're gonna test the same, uh, hydrants or different hydrants? So like all the hydrants we tested throughout the year maybe, or what's the goal?
So the, the goal of this is to find the weakest points in the water, or in the water system. And the only way to do that is by experimentation, and then once we find those weakest points, those will be our constant flush points. So, and then, uh, once we have those flush points, then we'll be able to pull the chlorine to those levels or to those points. To make sure we have the freshest water for everybody. So, but right now, we just don't know where those areas are, you know, some of them seem like common sense, right? We have one line that's a mile and a half dead in line, we know that one's gonna be, but we have these other weird pockets where, you know. On the surface it looks okay, but by the way, the lines are down below, there's not a loop there like you would assume. So we have to play with it to kind of find that out, which correlates to the G I S system Jason has on his side, so we're. We're playing with it back and forth and these guys are doing some, um, asset management with the, the lines on their side of the house as well. So it's, uh, it, it's working out really well, the E P A's happy that we're getting the water quality up for the customers. But they're also happy that we're playing with the asset management side of the house and trying to get all of our valves up and identify properly, working properly. And uh, that way, you know, when we do have a break at two o'clock in the morning, we're able to find working valves and shut that puppy off quick, it all ties together. You know, uh, just because it's better drinking water for the customer, there's actually second, third, you know. Uh, third order effects that really, uh, make the whole water system better. So, but you'll see the guys out, hopefully, let's say, hence, it'll do next week. Um, they should start doing that, and they account for that, just so you guys know. We have to measure that water because that'll count toward our water loss as well, so we can make sure we incorporate that in there, so don't lose that money. Or lose that money, shoot, lose that, uh, uh, gallon each one we're calculating then. So be on the lookout for that upcoming and lots of other construction, I'm drawing a blank. I would like to ask for committee meetings pretty quick this week, I know we had a couple of things. Um, I know planning and development, Nick's not here, he wanted to talk about energy, I owe him a couple, uh, documents for. Solar and, um, if we can get that on the books pretty quick and then, um. What was it, parks? Uh, do we need to, I guess my question, back to you guys, now that we, um. Do we need to do anything parks? Because we haven't done anything parks and wreck for a long time. Um, I can't really think of anything online, and Jason, can you think of anything parks and wreck on your side that you would need them for?
Yeah, I mean, we're up with the water line and generally, Polly, now that we've got that trench.
Um, we're gonna start digging for more, um, playground brands. So, um, and if you don't have any specific interest in that, then, uh, we're just gonna keep pursuing those.
I'm on the parks and recs twenty, you're the chairman, right? I'd like to review the pool season.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And I, I wanna throw something out there about parks real quick, Kevin at Polly, we took down the two slides in the dent.
Oh, yeah.
So they, they're no longer there, and it was a real sad day because when the slides were down. You know, I, I got burning them slides a lot when I was a kid, there's metal slides and to see them go away, it was kind of heartbreaking. Kids don't get to experience that these days.
So we did take down.
What about that, that trap of a monkey bar system that we had, is that still back there?
Insurance lady said that was okay to keep.
Really?
She said throw some mulch in there for fall protection.
It was never even, we did take all the posts out.
Yes. I, I just saw those as impingement objects, so we pulled out all those. It looks kind of barren down there now, I don't know if you've been down there lately, but all those white posts are gone now, so it's like this big grassy, really nice grassy field.
I can tell you.
Yes, we've been looking for sandstone, I, I thought, uh, they've been sold every time I found them, one place had really nice six foot long, two foot by two foot sandstone. I'd like to find those to put them around the edge, but, uh, I haven't been able to catch them when they still had them, so I'm still actively looking for those. Instead of putting concrete block, I think sandstone would look a lot nicer, I think that was Jason's suggestion.
It did knock off about an hour and a half, two hours and minutes. Trying to get around everything.
Somebody's houses that are demoing.
Uh, I haven't found any bank that, um. Yep, I, I did see it right next to savings. Yep, so, uh, that's what we're doing with the parks, so that was, been cleaned up, so we got some more work to do down there, is there? Um. Uh, I feel like there's something else that I'm forgetting off the top of my head that I know you and I talked about for parks and recs specific. And, uh, yeah, but the pool report, yes, thank you for bringing that up again.
And we can start the discussion, make sure that.
Yeah, definitely with the part time employee that we're talking about, um, we already started, uh, looking at equipment for that, I know, uh. Uh, one of our guys mentioned a new zero turn, I think we can get another summer out of this zero turn we have, it was purchased in two thousand seventeen. Uh, our first one, and then the last one was purchased in twenty twenty when I started. Um, I think we can get next year out of it, but, or twenty twenty-four, we need to definitely have a zero turn on our radar. To replace the one, but, um, I think we can get through that. I definitely want to have a police and fire meeting, um, just Dan or who that is. So, um. Yes.
Who else?
Yeah, gotta make sure with that.
Oh, you got things on there.
If you can.
It has to be Wednesday.
So, you need first part of next week. Okay, I'll, I'll just save my comments right there then.
Okay.
And then, um. Oh, actually, T S A P, uh, has a really good draft of the budget. And, uh, I got it. I brought a cursory. I got a cursory look at it today and, uh, I don't want to piss anymore about conceptual, that's it, baby.
No, it's just, it's, it's using, uh, this is our, our process last year to, using the year before as a framework. To, um, build within next year's revenue projections. So you're like looking at a couple of moving parts, but once we can get those to line up, which Scott and I, we're struggling with the general fund a little bit. Uh, and the water fund, but once we got those, um, then I'm gonna send them to the department heads for them to say, you know. I actually need less in contracts, I need more in operating next year because of this or, uh, so on and so forth. Um, but yeah, we were doing this final, it's kind, I don't know what, how to describe it, it's kind of like calibrating, we were almost there. Uh, and I came in and roughed it them at lunch and was like, let's, can we, can we get like fifty-two thousand in the general fund, and we did.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm gonna send those out probably in the morning. Uh, not to, not to you guys yet, the department heads are gonna do their stuff. Don't worry, we're almost there. We're almost there, the framework, I will say, the general framework that I can influence, um, and have the most impact on is, is that. Uh, there's no, well, all the funds have been strong this year, um, some stronger than others. And we're not asked, the, the framework will not ask any of the departments to cut, um, any services or staff or anything like that, so. Honestly, it won't look terribly different than this year's, um, it'll just have some inflation increases, wage increases.
We have more money in the street paving.
Alright. Yep. How much more we're saving, twenty twenty-four is gonna be a big year, guys, we have to save for twenty twenty-four. Just remember, twenty twenty-four is the big year, twenty twenty-four is the big one.
I think you guys are gonna, you guys, I tried to put a helpful balance between these two in there, I think we might be able to complement these two, two positions.
Well, it'd be nice to see, um, Baro, or that end of, uh, walnut from Baro down, that'll, that'll be nice too, so.
Yeah.
Can I give you a quick paving update, can I have a moly? Okay, so do you guys remember that package that we turned into O P W C? So we turned the package into O P W C that had Franklin Ford.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Had all those on there, so, oh, so the way that works is it goes to O P W C, O P W C scores it, then it comes back to the county for scoring before it goes to the region. So typically, the, uh, typically to get funded, you need an overall score after it gets scored at the county. Of four fifty or better. The max points the county can give you is seventy-five. So, last year, I think we had four thirty, or sorry, three thirty before we went down there. So maybe three forty, I don't remember, they could have gave us max points last year and we still wouldn't have had enough. So, this one, they're probably gonna make a new rule after what we did to them this year.
Did we almost get a hundred percent?
We're walking in at three ninety. So between, there was a lot of thought, or so, T S A P, myself and Michael Betts. And a few others that were in the room threw together some crazy ideas and Michael Betts somehow took those ideas and molded them into a hail mary. And it scored a three ninety, so we're walking in with the three ninety to the county.
Nice.
And, uh, that's in a few weeks, so we'll see how that goes. And, uh, that will be, if, if that gets approved, that'll be five million dollars in asphalt in twenty twenty-four. Not asphalt, paving, paving, paving.
So, so with that, um.
Five million.
Five million. Is it twenty twenty-four yet?
Yeah. Are we ready?
Will that include, uh, Riverside Drive?
New.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Taylor. The, uh.
We're working on it, baby steps.
Are there two projects, it can't be two from the county though that go to the region though, correct?
Sure can.
Oh, there could be, okay, so it's possible we could get the points we need to be able to move on and. Maybe they can give a part of the points to somebody else and two projects from the county possibly go, nice.
It's happened before. So we will find out more on that, but that's, uh.
I, I just remember our county was not really represented well in the region in the past, like, there weren't a lot of projects that. You know, made it that far, it seemed like, so.
Uh, I don't have a lot of experience on that board, just two years and, uh. Um, our projects just haven't really scored very well, um. Again, very basic level understanding, um, I don't know what the other folks have been there for years, this is, uh, this is a county engineer project more than anything. Mr. Maiden could talk way more sense about this than I can. And, uh, he would definitely be able to answer this a lot better, so Mr. Maiden, if you're watching, I'm not trying to, not trying to misspeak with any of this. Uh, I, I would think that with the amount of points that they can give and where we're at right now, I, I'm. I'm pretty excited.
Yeah, good.
I'm not, uh, nothing's guaranteed in life, but I'm pretty excited, so. And that's using water money up against our water project, with using our water project. But they haven't done, so like I said, there'll probably be a new rule next year.
Awesome. Great.
Well, that'd be great.
Yep, as soon as we find out, trust me, y'all know. It'll be, I'll be calling, we'll, we'll all know.
Do we have an update on Rita, what we're doing with that so far? Initiated that?
I, yeah, I can give one, I did want to give some context, that would be fifteen times our annual budget for street paving, so that would be. It'd be pretty wild, uh, Rita, we began our, um, weekly sessions with Rita. Uh, last week, I had two, um, I guess you would call it conferences with them, uh, met with their, well, a whole bunch of folks. I T, um, professionals basically about, uh, like they kind of were poking through our software system. Uh, met with our sales representative who helped, some leadership and, uh, some folks who worked there at other jobs and just began the process. We set a timeline with January first as the, uh, transition, I guess you would call it, the hard switch over. And, um, I made sure to tell them a couple of things, one, um, that, that, uh, council was serious about that date. Um, I, I didn't mention that I was worried about the pace, I didn't want to, uh, give anybody the wrong impression on those calls. Um, we, and, and took some other steps since those calls, uh, including today. Uh, but the second thing I made sure to tell them was that Nelsonville, including the council, myself, the city manager, attorney and others. Um, is very ambitious and doesn't want a run-of-the-mill product, but they can provide it whatever the cheapest cost and. Um, least amount of work is, that we talked about often, about being the best. We want to turn those kinds of water lines into the best water system, not in Southeast Ohio and Ohio, we want the governor to be talking about Nelsonville. We wanna turn those kinds of water lines into the best water system, not in southeast Ohio, in Ohio. We want the governor to be talking about Nelsonville as a model. And make sure to give them a pep talk that was like, we expect this to work and work very well, um, and we're gonna hold them to it. So.
Excellent.
They were, I'm not gonna lie, they sounded a little intimidated, but I was like, you guys are taking on way bigger projects than us. Uh, but we are serious. So.
I like it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we signed the papers. I should have sent that too.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Appreciate it. All right, we're to the good of the order. Um, Mr. Sherman?
So next weekend is, or this coming weekend, I should say, is, uh, Oxford Colleges have a rodeo at our new question center. So it's, uh, nice. Do I need to spell that for you?
No, no, I just remember you're gonna be declining or?
No, no, I put my Tony Dunphy suit away.
Okay, thanks, bud.
But, uh, so that's gonna be a pretty cool thing to see and, uh, you know, good time, having some more rodeos out there eventually. Some pretty fancy stuff with, uh, cutting horses and it should be a good time for everybody. It's very reasonable. Fifteen dollars a ticket, five hours parking. So if you have a chance, go see it. It'd be nice.
Do you know how many, uh, entrance they have for?
Entries? I, I don't know what their entries is, but they do have a, a website. You can get on there and it, it tells you a little bit more about the rodeo, but it's, uh, this is sanctioned rodeo. It's not just like a free-for-all. It's a professional rodeo. Saga?
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Uh, I just wanted to thank all the city workers, everybody that does all the stuff behind the scenes for our city. Uh, I think people kind of take it for granted sometimes once all concluded, they'll get it up, you know, so. Everybody guys are out at two thirty in the morning and look like they need a cup of coffee right now. Uh, yeah, we appreciate everything you guys do. Um, seen a lot of street lights that look like they've been replaced in town. I've been kind of on a crusade here of late. Looks like a lot of the replacing LEDs.
I saw that.
Which is awesome. Right there's the corner of, uh, Hawking Parkway, Riverside Drive. I came up the other night. I thought there was a car coming out. It's so bright. So, uh, you know, you see a street light out reported on the city website. Good straight A V. They've been really good about replacing those. Saga?
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, I have one thing. Um, Scott, I don't expect you to know the answer to this right now, but how are we setting on our boards and commissions for, um, open seats? Maybe that's something we can look at and announce next meeting.
Yeah, um, we still have open seats, but we actually were starting to fill up.
Good. That'd be great.
But, uh, we need, we need more.
Okay. That's all I have.
When I say that, we only got volunteers sporadically. They might've ran by now because we didn't have enough to compile and have a meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mr. Taylor?
Um, I wanna echo Mr. Booth's sentiment regarding the city workers. I appreciate, uh, all their work and, and, uh, being out in the middle of the night fixing a water leak. I think is, you know, challenging at times. So I'm glad this one went. So it seemed like it went maybe easier than some, you know, at least it wasn't mental winter and it wasn't freezing. Uh, but I do appreciate those guys out there working and, um, and taking care of that for us. And, um, you know, again, I appreciate, uh, Scott and Taylor's work on the budget. And like the fact that it's coming together, uh, nicely. I look forward to seeing that. I'm excited about that and getting that wrapped up hopefully. You know, uh, ahead of, I normally we're always scrambling, I think at the last minute, um, to do that, but, uh, so I'm excited for that. I appreciate you guys' efforts towards, um, you know, just everything as a, as a, from the ten thousand, you know, foot view of the city of what you guys are doing. And taking care of the people here. And, uh, I, I know there's a lot of people that don't see, uh, a lot of what you do, uh, what you're working on. And I know you guys are juggling a lot of tasks at, you know, and projects, uh, at the same time. So I know that comes down to, you know, your staff, uh, and your employees, you know, really being an intricate part of that. And, uh, I appreciate all the, the work that goes into it because I, I, I see it. I just wanna make sure that you realize that I see it. Um, I pay attention a little bit more than the average person probably because I'm more called with the city. I understand that, but, um, I just, you know, I've seen so much progress in the city, um, the last several years that, you know, we hadn't seen maybe in a decade or so in this, in this town. So I just appreciate all the work and the effort and the camaraderie of everybody coming together and, and, uh, pulling their weight and I think it's just tremendous. So I'd love to see that keep going, keep that momentum going. Thank you.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
One more thing.
I would also like to echo, uh, Mr. Booth and Mr. Taylor's sentiments, uh, towards the, uh, towards the city and their workers. You know, recently, uh, we've been accused of being a good old boy network here publicly. You know, the funny thing is, is not one person on the council is from Nelsonville originally. Not one person. So if you're accusing somebody of being a good old boy network, you obviously don't know what that entails. So go to the dictionary and look it up. But, um, uh, the city has come a long ways. There's a lot of stuff people that, uh, people don't know that's going on. Uh, there's a lot of criticisms. If you, but if you walk around and you really look, if you really honestly, with open eyes and open mind, the city has come a long ways. It has come a long way. We are not in the red anymore. We're in the black. Two years ago, three years ago, we were all over the red and everything. Where we're financially in one of the best places we've been in a long time. And that comes with good leadership, um, from Mr. Scott Frank and Mr. Taylor Sappington watching the books. And, uh, the city employees doing their job. So it's like to say thank you all. So, and with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.